Good evening to the city council candidate forum, co-sponsored by Fremont for Everyone and the Fremont Library. And we're graced by having three council district races on November 5th. And all of the council candidates that are running in their respective districts. From left to right is Teresa Kang, Praveesh Kumar, Ranbir Sandhu from District One. And now from District Five, we have Sterling Engel, Chandravag, and Ya Jin Zhang. And from District Six, we have Teresa Cox and Raymond Liu. And Fremont for Everyone advocates for inclusive, affordable housing for our residents and ensures Fremont is welcoming of new neighbors while remaining a wonderful community for living closer to work, raising a family, and aging in place. A home for everyone. And we're so honored to have a co-sponsorship with the Fremont Library. And we will begin with the forum because we have so many candidates and so little time. But we will go over the ground rules briefly. Each of the candidates will be given a two-minute opening. And then there will be a series of questions. We have Kate Ammon from Fremont for Everyone here who's waving her hand. If you want to ask a question from the audience, time permitting, we'll ask a few audience questions as well. For the answers to the questions that we pose, it will only be one minute each. And if in the unlikely event somebody falls out, somebody else, then that person will have up to 30 seconds to reply. But we would really encourage people to be affirmative and positive in their message this evening. So at this point, I would just simply go left to right, and we'll try to randomize it a little bit. But we're going to be going with our opening statements. And so our first opening statement is from Teresa Kang for two minutes.
Thank you, David. Is that on now?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, David, and thank you for Fremont for Everyone for hosting this forum. My name is Teresa Kang. I'm your city council member in District One for the last six years. I was first elected in 2018 when Fremont first went to District. And my first year was two years, so that's why I get an extra two years here with my second four years coming up. So Fremont has established itself as a compassionate city, as well as the happiest city in America in the last five years or so. But we are actually, as you can see, it's a very diverse community. And many languages are spoken in our schools, in our community, and businesses. And currently, we have more than half of our community members in our city being born outside of the country. So we have worked well together, we have played well together. But we are, we can only be as happy as the least fortunate among us. And in the last few years, Fremont is not, you know, we're not unique in our challenges with our unhoused population. Even with some of our, as many as 300 students in our schools don't have a permanent home. And we, every winter, we are helping them with, you know, special packages. But that's only a very little help that we are providing for them. And we see the RVs parked in different parts of our city. We see encampments. And my husband is a veteran. I have the previous situation. And many of our homeless populations are actually veterans. They are challenged with mental and health issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to go to Praveesh Kumar.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Praveesh Kumar. I have been a proud resident of Fremont for the last 13 years. Over that time, I have seen our city change and not always the better. It is no longer the Fremont I moved to, and that is why I am stepping up. Though I came from non-political background, I bring with me 25 years in experience in technology, leadership, and negotiations. I believe these skills are crucial in driving positive change for our community. My goal is to help create a better Fremont, one that addresses critical issues like affordable housing, homelessness, public safety, and traffic management. These changes are all interconnected. And we must address them in a balanced, thoughtful way. With a right approach and by leveraging technology, I am confident we can maximize our existing resources and funds to make a meaningful improvement. Housing and homelessness are especially close to my heart. And I am eager to work on these issues for the benefit of all Fremont residents. Thank you very much. Thank you for Fremont for Everyone. And I'm looking forward for the opportunity to serve on Fremont residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Ranbir Sandhu.
Thank you, Fremont. Thank you, Fremont for Everyone, for having me. My name is Ranbir Sandhu. I was born in London, England, and moved to District One in 1975. And I've lived here ever since. My wife Jyoti and I bought a home in 2003. We have three kids, two college-age daughters, and a nine-year-old boy who goes to Artwork Elementary. In fact, I went to that school when it went first opened its doors back in 1984. I own a successful estate planning and business law firm located in central Fremont. As a business attorney, I represent several Fremont businesses and work with a diverse number of clients with real problems. I listen to people. I see the problems they face, and I help them through their challenges. Now that I've established my business, I have the time and I know I can effectively use my skills as an attorney in city health. Having lived in Fremont for over 40 years, 40-plus years, I've seen the notable changes in the community. And I can't but help but feel disappointed with this, with the transformation. I believe many things could have been handled significantly better. We have a housing shortage and a homeless problem. It all relates to zoning, planning, infrastructure, public safety, and all those other things. I'm not running for office for a political career. I want to help the community I have called home all my life. It's time for a change. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandhu. Those were the three candidates from District One. I've neglected to introduce myself. My name is David Bonacorsi, one of the part of the leadership team for Fremont for Everyone. Now we're going to go over to District Five with Sterling Engel first up.
Good evening. I'm Sterling Engel, candidate for City Council, District Five. Thank you to Fremont for Everyone, library staff, for hosting this event. Born on July 4th, 1995. I'm the youngest candidate, raised in District Five by my townie's immigrant mother and your Asian father. I attended our public schools, Laithwell-Hopkins and Mission. I studied Asian Studies at UC Berkeley and earned a Master of Pure Science from UCLA in 2022. In 2019, I interned for Congressman Rob Catta, diagnosed with mild autism at age three, and now mostly with a disability. I have overcome many challenges. As the youngest and only single candidate, I would bring diversity to our city council. Represent a significant part of our community. I'm passionate about public service and giving back to the city that raised me. I background in the area of entrepreneurship, provides a unique perspective on addressing our community needs. My priorities both on five key areas. Public safety, ensuring safer neighborhoods and responsive emergency services. B, affordable housing and homelessness, implementing our homelessness response to prevent homelessness and increase housing solutions. C is a stable growth, promotes possible balance, economic growth, environmental protection. D, infrastructure improvement, investing in bike-wash roads and community facilities. E, community engagement, foster transparent communication, active participation in local government. I'm committed to working tirelessly for it, bringing fresh perspectives to the city council. Together, we can make Fremont even a better place to live. I look forward to earning your support. Please visit my website, sterlingforfremont.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And why don't you just keep the mic open and hand it to your left to Chandravag.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to the organizing committee and all the volunteers and Fremont Library as well. I am Chandravag. I'm running for Fremont City Council from District Five. I came to Fremont from a tiny village in India. And I lived here almost for, nearly for two decades. I spent my life in the tech industry. My wife, she's sitting there, is a small business owner. My two boys, born here, graduated from Irvington High School. I'm passionate about the community services and volunteering. And this is a passion I want to take it to the next level, to take care of our Fremont residents. That is the reason I'm contesting. My priorities are similar to what Fremont City has set up. These are the two top priorities I'm having, that is, taking care of the public safety as well as homelessness. This homelessness is a challenging issue. I'm going to start with a data now, which I would like to mention here before we move forward. So in 2022, Fremont City reported that 1,026 people are experiencing homelessness, which is a 60, almost 68% surge compared to 2,019. Also, when there was a grant provided by the state for home security, Fremont City did not apply for round one. Round two was rejected, but in round three, we selected Motel 6 to convert it to affordable housing. Also, Fremont City mandated for market developers to have 15% for affordable housing. I visited people in the Montsping area, in the neighborhood which is in front of Montsping Park Station. And I come, I talked to them, and they expressed their concerns about the safety issues.
Thank you, Mr. Vag. If you could hand it to Ya Jin Zhang, also from District Vag. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. And first of all, I want to thank Fremont for Everyone for sponsoring such an amazing event. And also, thank you, everyone, for coming out here and so that you can be informed and involved and so that you can decide, you know, who is the best candidate to serve Fremont. So thank you very much. And my name is Ya Jin Zhang. I'm currently the president of Fremont Unified School District Board of Education. And four years ago, I had honor and the privilege to be selected, to be elected as the board trustee of District Four. And during the four years, I'm proud to say that I have successfully balanced the budget and negotiated positive agreement and also worked with the city and partnered with them on many successful education programs. And as a small business owner of 20 years, I have experience and skills to lead and grow my small business. As small as a mom with two children who attend Fremont Unified School District, I understand every parent's dream, challenge, and concern. And my platform are public safety and grow small business and creating a vibrant climate and affordable housing and also continue to support Fremont education. So experience matters, and I have the success track record. So, and also the governance experience. I'm looking forward to continue serve Fremont. And thank you so much. I would like to have the privilege to continue serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. And there should be a third mic over there for, now we're moving from District Five to the Irvington District of Fremont, which is District Six. Teresa Cox, do you want to begin, please, for two minutes?
Thank you. Can you hear me this? Thank you so much to Fremont, everyone, for hosting this event tonight. As the current Fremont City Councilmember of Irvington, I am proud to be also have served you 12 years. And additionally, as a Loney Community College trustee. Where I'm a mother, I've raised my two kids right here in Fremont that have gone to Irvington High School, as well as to Horner and Madison. And additionally, I have championed for public safety by leading the cleanup efforts around our Irvington Community Park, as well as around Hirsch and Horner Schools, so children could walk, walk and run, and ride their bikes to school every day. I also supported the affordable housing that's in District Six, which is the Doug Ford Senior Housing, and also the ongoing project of Osted Housing in District Six. I've always asked the question during our city council meetings, where is the affordable housing? Is it part of the package when we are approving development projects? I am also honored to receive the endorsements from Fremont Police Association, Fremont Firefighters, Alameda County Building Trades Council, Alameda Labor Council, as well as the Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus and Alameda County Democratic Party. I will continue to be the unique voice to city council for greater collaborations between the city, the county, state, and federal, and schools, and champion for good-paying jobs, affordable housing, public safety, small business initiatives, and a safe environment for all people. I'm committed to working hard for all Fremont residents to build a better community together. And if you want to learn more about my campaign, visit www.teresacox.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raymond Liu for District Six.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Raymond Liu, and I am running for Fremont City Council, District Six. I want to thank everybody in the audience for being here tonight, as well as David and everybody else at Fremont for Everyone for hosting this event. I'll start off by introducing myself. I've lived in Fremont for pretty much my entire life, and I am a proud product of Fremont's public education system. I've attended Horner Junior High School, Irvington High School, as well as Loney College, where I graduated with three Ph.D.s degrees. I then completed my education by transferring to UC Davis and obtaining my bachelor's degree. Fremont is my home, and it's played a big part in shaping up who I am today. And that's part of the reasons why I'm running. I want to give back to the community that raised me, as well as ensure that all residents of Fremont can have the same opportunities and success as the I have had. Now, one of the reasons I'm running is bringing accountability and transparency back to our local government. Fremont has had a series of scandals recently, most notably the corruption scandal involving former city manager Mark DeMay, who was convicted of fraud after embezzling money from our city government. Despite this, he was provided a $300,000 status check when he left his position. It's actions like these which deeply damage the community's trust in our leadership. And I intend to explore integrity back to Fremont and ensure that our government is accountable to the people that it serves. Secondly, I wish to discuss the ongoing homelessness crisis in Fremont right now. Now, homelessness is a very complex issue, and it deserves a balanced response to address this. Yes, we must have compassion, but we must also have accountability and practicality in regards to our solution. Now, yes, we must have mental health services, addiction treatments, as well as affordable housing, but we must also enforce laws to keep our public spaces safe and open for everyone. Criminal behaviors such as open drug use or petty theft should never be tolerated. Now, I want to make it clear that the current status quo we have has not been working. We've seen an increase in corruption, homelessness, as well as crime, both property crime and violent crime, much like the tragic shooting that occurred in District Six on Gervin Boulevard earlier. It's time for a change in Fremont. Fremont needs fresh new ideas and strong new leadership that are able to bring accountability and integrity back to our Fremont government.
Thank you very much. We're now going to go to our questions that the leadership team at Fremont for Everyone has assembled. And these are for one-minute responses. And as we go back to District One, we're going to start with Praveesh Kumar. We'll go down in the row and then back to Teresa Kang. District One is in North Fremont, borders Union City, includes Forest Bar Garden, Wood Areas, Thornton, and American High School as part of the attendance areas. Our first question for each of you, and if you need me to repeat it, because it's a long line here, I'm happy to do so. Has Fremont adequately addressed the immediate needs of people experiencing homelessness? If so, please tell us what our best strategy has been. And if not, what should Fremont be doing better? Mr. Kumar.
As far as city data, we see between 2019, 2022, there are steep hike in homelessness, around 70%, 80% hike. And then, point in time count between 22 and 24, that surge, but there was a dip of 20%. So at 124 data, around 800 people are unhoused in Fremont. And I feel that the city is not able to handle that in proper way. To handle that, we really need urgent emergency shelters for those to keep them off from the street and provide shelter and then take them to the right category where they belong, based on their skills, based on their age group, and then...
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ranbir Sandhu, same question.
There was a 2023 Fremont Police Department survey, and homelessness was the number one issue. And that is what they are thinking about right now. So no, homelessness is not adequately addressed. We've built 901 units where we have at least 800-plus homeless people or more. It's hard to figure that out. There is a point in time count, but it's not done often enough. It's not also accurate enough. People come to human services department, and it's indirectly tracked here. There's not everyone using it either. So how, how do we know where they are? I go to Mayor Brad, and I see homeless people just sitting there while they're in meetings. Those people aren't counted. How often are these countings done? They're not accurate. We need to help people. We need to go out there and actually give people services. That's not done. We use tier one instead of tier three. We could at least use tier two. But no, we're not doing that. It's, it's a long priority.
Thank you. Now we're going to go over to District Five, which is roughly the area from Mission Boulevard from the 680 overpass all the way to the southern end of Fremont. And Mr. Engel, if you could proceed. Yes, Mr. Engel, if you could go proceed with a one-minute response.
Do you see the Supreme Court of the city of grants passed?
And please put your mic close to your mouth, please. The question is, has Fremont adequately addressed the immediate needs of people experiencing homelessness? If so, please tell us what our best strategy has been. If not, what should Fremont be doing better? And for all the candidates, please put the mics close to your mouths so it can be picked up by our livestream and for the recording that we're going to make afterward.
Mr. Bonacorsi, yeah, I found the correct question. He says Fremont adequately addressed the immediate needs of people experiencing homelessness. So please tell us what our best strategy has been. If not, let us know if you do. That's the question you just said. Thank you for the question. I believe that Fremont has not adequately addressed the immediate needs of people experiencing homelessness. While efforts and plans have been put in place, the situation seriously demands more decisive and immediate action. Homelessness is not just a lack of shelter. It is a profound psychological struggle. Many experiencing homelessness have faced trauma and jelling hard to return to work and re-engage in society. However, hope has its limits. After two or three years of streets, it becomes significantly more challenging to help individuals without extensive support. So what should Fremont be doing? First, we need to focus on both prevention and immediate assistance, prevent it crucially stop more people from falling into homelessness. This includes providing rentals that are the formal housing options and support services for those at risk.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chandravag.
We did not adequately address this problem. If we had addressed, we would not have had encampments still on the street. We have to prioritize the problem here. There are people living in the encampments. There are people, families are experiencing homelessness. We have to prioritize. Because we cannot wait for the facilities over the time to take care of the people. What is the data? We have 800 people who are experiencing homelessness. Second data point, we, Fremont City, 78 apartment units, which they released, they received 11,000 applications. So this is not a problem we can fix all the time. We have to prioritize the existing people who are living in encampments, who are those 800 people or plus people who are reported by the Fremont City. What are their needs? How we can help them to provide a temporary shelter, provide the healthcare services, and provide them kind of adequate facilities so that they can, they can get back onto their feet and start earning their better life, or they can have a better life. So this is what my thought on this.
Thank you. Mr. Engel, if you could pass the mic back to Teresa Kang for her turn. That's for the District One mic. Ya Jin Zhang.
Hello? Okay, good. Well, I think that Fremont has done the best it can. And this issue has been, is prevalent in every city. And during 2019 until 2021, the number of homeless has surged to be around 1,200. I think the number, even though it's reported by city, reduced 21%. But I'm not so sure that's an accurate number. So, I mean, there's many things we have to address. But certainly, I see that it's limited by resource and human resource and the budget. What I can see immediately is maybe we can think about safe parking. And so we can having a lot, and got, you know, we have lots of RVs and RVs, you know, scattered around the street. Maybe we can, you know, put them together and provide some kind of resource so that we can tag in waiting for them to get a affordable housing. So that's the immediate thing I can, I can think of. And we also can work with other cities to learn from their experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Teresa Cox.
Thank you for the question. When you look at the city of Fremont and our budget that we spend, it's close to... This mic is not working, is it? Yeah, okay. Here it is. I, I don't hear it. I can't hear it.
It wasn't working. Now it's not.
Why don't you hand the... That other mic there.
Okay. Thank you for the question. When you look at the city of Fremont budget, when we look at homelessness, we're spending close to about $7.6 million. And 79% of that budget is accommodation of shelter, housing operations, hygiene, and meal programs, outreach and drop-in programs, which we refer to would be the crisis support and mitigation activities that are trying to reduce any type of environmental health impacts as we do a lot of cleanup around the homelessness. And so the point of it is that Fremont, the greater need of more people, the need is greater than what we can respond to. It's going to take a lot of money to be able to address it, but also get down to the root causes of why homelessness is happening to the individuals. And spending the money to be able to determine that, to then filter into the programs of whether it's temporary housing, to move to transitional housing, to permanent housing, to looking at those that could find a job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now also for District Six, Raymond Liu.
So there was two parts to that question. First of all, is, are there immediate needs of the homelessness people being addressed? I think we can all agree the answer to that is an emphatic no. Now, the second part of the question is a little bit more complex, is what can we do to help them? Well, like other people have mentioned, one of the reasons why people are homeless in the first place is the absolute skyrocketing prices of housing. Does anybody know what the price of an average house in Fremont is? It's 1.5 million. To buy a house in Fremont, you need $300,000 just for a guarantee there. So we need to build more affordable housing, number one, which hasn't been done. And second of all, I repeat, we also need to enforce laws. A lot of these issues stem from the fact that people are addicted to drugs, and we need to help them, win them off their addiction. However, any open drug use by anybody should never be tolerated. Thank you.
And finally, for this question, we're going to go jump from South Fremont to North Fremont, and Teresa Kang in District One.
Thank you. As you know, in the last few years, Fremont has, City of Fremont actually has done a lot in several ways to help address the immediate needs of the homeless population, such as public safety parking. We have built a navigation center after much opposition, as you were all aware of. And that navigation center actually has a very high successful rate to transit, help transit people to permanent housing. And we said, we have met teams... And uh we said we have met teams that go out regularly to the uh whether it's encampment sites or RVs and help people with uh housing vouchers. But uh yes, because of budget, because of the uh the needs are greater than uh what we can support. Uh we are uh like the other cities struggling uh still with the homeless issues and uh we need to continue to you know, increase our affordable housing as we have been doing and but also uh continue to work with our state and
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're gonna head on to the next question. The question's gonna start with Ravir Sandhu. And please help me out if I skip somebody as the first question. I want to keep in order here. Proposition five is on the statewide ballot in November. If Proposition five passes, it'll make it easier for affordable housing bonds at the local level to pass. Do you support Proposition five and whether you support it or not if it passes? Will you support having local bond measures for affordable housing here in Fremont? Mr. Sandhu.
Yes, I would support this measure. I think that's the only way is to actually enforce these laws and take it to the local level. If we don't do anything, nothing's gonna get done. We're just gonna be a limbo. So yes, we should. We should put this homelessness into a priority by following laws and maybe even higher than some of the other cities. I know we're apparently doing well, but I don't think it's well enough. So yes, we should be doing as much as we can and following that measure.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mr. Sandhu, for not answering for the full minute. It allows us to add more questions too. So, Mr. Angle.
What's the question?
Proposition five is on the statewide ballot in November. It would allow for affordable housing bonds to pass more easily. If it passes, um would you support it? Would you support Proposition five? And whether you you support it or not, would you support a local bond initiative here in Fremont for affordable housing?
Want to hear about rent stabilization? Make sure I'm answering the right question.
No, but please listen to the question. It's on Proposition five on the affordable housing.
Proposition five of affordable housing, Mr. Bond and Corsi, does that what it pertains to?
Yes. So do you want me to repeat the question one more time? Otherwise, I'll just have you go ahead and answer. Do you want me to repeat it one more time? Okay. Proposition five is on the statewide ballot in November. If Proposition five passes, it will make it easier for local bond measures to pass in local jurisdictions like Fremont. Whether you support Proposition five or not, the second part of the question is, would you support affordable housing bonds uh being placed on the ballot here in Fremont to raise more money for affordable housing? They're all supposed to be surprise questions, so. You you free not to answer the question and we can move on to Mr. Wag. That's fine. That's okay. That's okay. Everyone has a right to pass and we have more questions for the rest of us. Mr. Wag.
Yeah, so again, I'll go back to statistics. So state mind just how the sixty percent affordable units build up by twenty twenty-one, that is eight eight years period. So roughly that comes to around seven thousand plus units. We as a city do not have resources or the budget for it. But if you want to address the homelessness problems and if you see that affordable housing is the one solution, it is not the four hundred percent solution, but it is one part can address. So definitely we have to find a funding sources and that is coming from the Prop five uh Prop five. So I will definitely support it because affordable housing is what we need to address the homelessness.
And again, from District Five, rounding out District Five, Ya Jing Zhang.
Thank you for the question. Absolutely, I would support Proposition five. And uh we have passed uh A one uh general bond in two thousand sixteen uh in the region. And Fremont has got thirty-three million. And with that money, we have built many affordable housing. But even with that, you know, the demand is much more than what we can come up with. So absolutely, I think this is one of the resources we have to come up with more affordable housing. With the Reno number, the Fremont would have required to build thirteen thousand uh units with seven thousand for affordable housing. With the Innu fee, we don't have enough money to build affordable housing. So the resource is key. So with this passed, I think definitely it's a great help for us to reach Reno number four of affordable housing. Thank you very much.
For the benefit of the audience, Reno stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation or Assessment. That's the housing production goals that we need to meet. Uh Theresa Cox, District Six.
Thank you. Yes, I would support Proposition five. Part of it is that the local communities will be given the monies to be able to manage affordable housing. And part of that would help first-time buyers to be able to purchase homes. But also it helps us to build and repair um you know, our infrastructure for affordable housing. But also with bond measure, you can have that money also help in the infrastructure that supports all the housing like fire, police, the library. This is something that would be a community issue for all people, that it would they would be able to make it a better uh a better community with additional funding that we need to close the gap um to support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lu from District Six.
Hi, uh before uh we start the answering this question, I just want to clarify the rules for the standard for our candidates allowed to have mobile devices now.
There's no rule against it. That's fine.
Now, to answer this question, uh yes, I do support Prop five. The reason for that, Prop five is just another extension of democracy. It allows bond measures to be voted on by the public, which is us, you guys, everybody in this room, everyday residents of Fremont. Now, as to whether they pass or not, that that is another issue and that depends on uh what specific bond measures they are. However, I am never against the widening of democracy. It is up to us, the people, to decide on what Fremont housing should be. And bond letters like this allow a greater say for everybody in Fremont, all residents of Fremont, to be able to choose and decide on what the priorities on housing should be. Thank you.
Back to the front here with Theresa Kang. In District One.
Thank you. So absolutely, I will be supporting Proposition five as it will really get us the funding that we need for more affordable housing. And uh as uh my position is always, prevention is always much more effective and um less costly than treatment, especially in the uh issue with homelessness. We uh to get one person in house, it takes so much more effort than keeping a house. So um in fact, to get them there, um because we know, you know, housing, whether you're buying or renting, is so much so expensive nowadays. Uh so we really uh need all the resources and funding that we can get uh to build affordable housing that we really need.
Thank you, uh Mr. Kumar from District One.
Your direct answer to your question, support to Proposition five or not, yeah, I do support. But I do have a question on that. Does it enough to support that and build the affordable housing from that fund? I feel that that is not. The reason affordable housing, when we build affordable housing, that means somebody else is paying for that. If when people are not paying, able to make enough rent, then somebody like somebody else is paying for that data of the rent. And that's a code. We have to build that. Cities having, residents are having unsupported housing here. Affordable housing you're talking about, but we are not talking about any low-cost housing in time anywhere. And that is my concern. As far as Proposition five, I do support that affordable housing we do need. But along the affordable housing, we need a low-cost housing as well where residents can buy and own the house.
Thank you very much. Uh the next question's gonna start with Mr. Angle in District Five, and this is the question. Recently, the Supreme Court of the City of Grants Pass said that it was no longer cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize the state of being homeless. On Tuesday, September seventeenth, the city was considering new policies in line with the governor's executive order encouraging cities to address removing encampments. Do you support Governor Newsom's executive order? And do you support new ordinances that you think the city should adopt? Mr. Angle, for one minute, please. You need a mic, sir?
Again, I pass like the last question because I'm not even show up to add the center.
Okay, Mr. Wag, please, for one minute.
This homelessness homelessness encampments poses a great safety issues, environmental hygiene issues. The neighborhood people already raised their concerns having these encampments in the neighborhood. So we have to, so I'm 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 support, I support this Grand Pass declaration that we must we must act against these encampments. We can find out a solution to the people who are there so that they can have a better conditions of living. But we do not, I do not want these encampments in our neighborhood. I'll strongly against the encampments. I strongly support Grand Pass declaration.
Ya Jing Zhang, District Five.
Hello? Okay. Um I support Governor Newsom uh the the policy, but I think he should have done that a little bit earlier. And uh also the encampment, removed encampment that we are proposed to do is not, in my opinion, a cruel and inhuman behavior. It's just to make sure that the 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 people living in the encampment try to pay attention to the to the neighboring residents and and business so that they do not take water or utilities to cause some some danger to the community. And I think that Matt, a director I talked to, and he has been working diligently with the homeless people, educate them, try to ask them to follow the rules. And I think that we are moving forward to ensure that we keep our city and uh safe and uh and sanitary. At the same time, we want to help the this homeless people. So I think that's a good direction to move. Uh I I support that.
And finally, oh well, not finally, Theresa Cox, District Six.
Thank you. Uh yes, I do support the governor's position in giving us uh more power for the city government to make changes. One of the changes we did make is in the Persian corner schools. We have no parking uh and no tollway. The no parkings for six feet and above for vehicles. We're uh is on the September seventeen meeting, we were also discussing uh putting in ordinance to protect those that uh we wouldn't have any RV encampments around our parks and our schools where children and families are. Uh those are important. Uh we're weighing a lot of other considerations right now. So we'll uh be deliberating that at a future council meeting. But I wanted to leave that, yes, this has given us a little bit of edge in how to improve the quality of life for everyone. And that uh we do have things in place to keep everyone safe.
Mr. Lu.
My answer is simple, yes. I wholeheartedly support our governor's uh executive orders. Now, the main question I'm concerned about is what has taken Fremont so long in implementing this? We have other cities in California, such as San Francisco and San Jose, who are have been committed to this and have already begun cleaning up their streets and making their cities safer for everybody, ensuring that people are allowed to use their parks, their libraries, without fear of being harassed. Now, uh again, I would like to emphasize, we need a balanced approach. So we can't simply cut people off.
Oh, so this is, I'm sorry. Sorry, apologies. Go ahead.
Nice. So I I saw thirty seconds.
I'll add, I'll add time to it, yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Uh let me forget my fair thought. So yeah, uh again, we must have a balanced approach. Yes, we need to get people off street, off our streets. That's the most important issue. However, you know, uh once we get them off our streets, we can begin treating them. We can begin treating their mental health issues. We can we can begin treating their addiction issues. And again, I emphasize, any people found committing crimes, irregardless of whether they are homeless or not, should have the full extent of the law prosecuted to them. And if anybody is found using old, using drugs or selling drugs, we must prosecute them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh going back to District One, Theresa Kang.
Thank you for this question. I think unfortunately, we have to come to this point where because uh we see encampment you know, at different spots in the in the city and uh the city staff have have so gone out and refused me to, you know, offer their resources and and offer their vouchers. But uh people, you know, for different reasons, they they, you know, choose to camp there. Uh but I think, you know, the with the limited resources that we have, uh everything with the cleanup at the same one side was important. We were we're spending thousands of dollars just for, you know, picking up trash, you know, because we're outsourcing for, you know, uh contractors to to clean up and um there may be, you know, hazardous materials or whatever. But I think with those cleanup fees, we can use those, you know, uh that money to place and to give resources to people that are who really uh need that money to.
Thank you, uh Profesh Kumar, Mr. Kumar.
Thank you, Mr. David. Uh do you know that Fremont, uh sorry, California has the largest homeless population in the nation? More than hundred and eighty thousand homeless people in California. Finally, Supreme Court has to intervene to overturn that legal protection for homeless residents in California. And after that, govern- governor has no choice to put that executive order to place that, that we need to clean up the encampment. So we are unfortunate that we are reached at that stage that somebody has to give the executive order to do the things that we should be doing long before. So I strongly support this order and this gives us tool to execute and clean the city. And cleaning the city is not the thing that you put one block and then you put another take that homeless to book and the block. You have to have a plan of emergency shelters to them and full. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sandhu, Ravir Sandhu, District One.
Yes, I support the policy to remove homeless encampments. However, we need to house these people. We need to help them. They can't be just left forgotten. They will just move to another location from one to the next. That's what happens in San Francisco. That's a problem. Therefore, I do support safe parking. We need more resources. We need more social work. As I mentioned, tier one is not enough. We need to try more, at least tier two or two, tier three system. Where we're actually going to the and really trying to help them, not just nonprofits. We need more policing. We also need more staff. This is not a permanent solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to the next question again, Kate, do you want to raise your hand back there? Are you gathering cards from people? In case we need them. So just want to make sure, raise your hand if everything has a question. She's got cards to fill out.
Anyone have questions?
Next question will be beginning with Chandra Wag from District Five. There has been a new state law, it was the Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen, that sets minimum rent stabilization for certain classes of tenants. Do you believe that renters' rights should be further strengthened in the city of Fremont? And if so, would additional tenant protections are needed, if any? Mr. Wag.
So tenant protection is important. Yeah, so so tenant protection is important, as I said. But that is the question, can can that really solve the problem which we are discussing that is about homelessness? Uh Fremont City already has five percent tenant protection already there. If landlord wants to go beyond it, they have to file a case with the Fremont City where they are, where they where they take into consideration before they approve the tenant protection. Also, there is a tenant protection that uh across uh there are multiple states in having that we cannot landlord cannot increase more than ten percent tenant uh more than ten percent rent. So when we have all these things already lined up, that leads to a question, why do we need uh this additional tenant protection? Because this is not going to address the homelessness problem. Because the homelessness, they are they are in poverty and they are not in a uh condition to pay the rents.
Thank you. From District Five, Ya Jing Zhang.
Okay, um uh David, would you please repeat the question?
Sure. There's been new state law that sets minimum rent stabilization for certain classes of tenants. Do you believe that renter rights should be further strengthened in the city of Fremont? And if so, would additional protections are needed?
Thank you. I do not believe that additional uh tenant uh uh rights should be strengthened in Fremont. Uh because I think so far our city is doing well with rent uh rent mediation. And right now that the market
And right now that the market is dictating rent, actually, you know, I have few rents in Hayward, and I could not even raise five percent because the reason is inflation. So the market rent has dropped, you cannot even raise five percent. So I think the landlord that does what they do best is market details. And, uh, I think that, uh, you know, if you want to, uh, to take the, the landlord advice away, you're gonna shrink the rental property and the business. And you would further have, you know, no rental units for the tenant to, to occupy, thank you.
Thank you, now to District Six, Teresa Cox.
Right now Fremont has a board where everyone comes together, the landlord and the tenant, to work out the disputes. Um, I don't have the numbers in front to see how effective it is, um, but there is some concern that, uh, we have homes here in Fremont that tenants are living in that are, still have mildew, they still have mold, they still have, uh, some sort of pest, uh, issue going on. That we need to really take a look at more and see how to go address that more effectively. Um, the only area that has had more tenant, uh, protection has been those that live in the local park, um, that they have their, uh, rent is set up to be on five percent max. And so those are some other areas that we probably need to take a look at and see if there's some existing problems that we need to address, um, at this time. But I always believe that, you know, as a tenant, you need to have a right to live in a best condition.
Thank you, Mr. Lu.
Hi, so, uh, my answer is, uh, to, uh, should we strengthen the tenant protections, is that correct? My answer to that is, uh, yes, uh, no, I mentioned earlier, but, um, one of the, well, I mean, the main cause for homelessness is, uh, you not having a home, I think that's, uh, pretty obvious to everyone. Now, how does that happen? One, if you can't afford a home, or two, you've been, uh, kicked out due to some various reasons. So, uh, I do believe we need protections to be able to help some of our homeowners. I talked to a veteran, uh, the other day who was, uh, unable to afford rent anymore because he's got something laid off from his job and he couldn't utilize his savings fast enough. Now, I propose something more of a grace period and able to help those get back on their feet. No, we shouldn't have tenants, uh, stay at, uh, loach off of landlords forever, we shouldn't have squatters. But we do need protections for people that have an unfortunate accident happen to them or they are simply down on their luck, thank you.
Move over to District One, Teresa King.
So Fremont actually does have a rental review board where we set the recommended rent increase to, you know, no more than five percent anyway. And, uh, I, I, if I remember correctly, uh, we have actually been able to resolve, uh, somewhere between eighty to ninety percent of the disputes, uh, that have came in front of the board. So we've been very successful in, uh, uh, mediating the, uh, disputes and of tenants they are facing. And so I think we are doing well and, uh, we should, uh, keep the, uh, rental market, uh, as a, I would say a free market. But I would, I also, uh, think that, uh, when, during the pandemic, uh, when many renters were facing, uh, uh, issues, uh, to pay their rent, we, uh, if we are able to have those resources again, uh, I definitely would support, uh, having those rent review for renters who are, uh, distressed, thank you.
Mr. Kumar, District One.
I feel Fremont have a better rent control already, uh, five percent increase is a rule in Fremont. Fremont, uh, I have not seen that Fremont landlords increase more than five percent at one time. So I feel that is very reasonable, the reason I feel that is reasonable, that we need to make sure that the landlords also, they feel, uh, they are interested, they are motivated for renting their property. And for that reason, that is required, I feel, and we need to work on the case by case that if somebody lost a job, so they cannot pay rent, or they, they didn't get any money, like, they cannot in, uh, afford the rental increase. I have been in rent property, uh, for about five years in Fremont, and I was able to negotiate with landlords whenever the rent increase, I was able to put out my case and say, hey, I cannot give that. And then I was able to settle on one to two percent.
Thank you, Mr. Sandhu, Mr. Kumar, Mr. Sandhu, please.
I think the question is, do you support tenant rights even further, I'm just paraphrasing. Uh, no, we have enough, uh, we have gone through enough after COVID, uh, the court systems were backlogged. I myself had to evict a tenant as an attorney. The tenant appeared in court, they knew the system, they appeared and then rented the house via Airbnb, continue to boot the system. I believe we are already fine, we are tenant favored state, county and city. As such, rent control should stay as is for now, at that five percent, thank you.
Mr. Angle.
I pass, thank you for that important question, while I would need to research specifics to provide.
If you could put the mic close to your mouth, nobody can hear you on, on the live stream, Mr. Angle.
I pass, thank you for that important question, while I would need to research specifics to provide detailed answer, I'd like to take this opportunity, I'd say I'd like to commit it to addressing pressing issues facing our community.
We'd like to have the questions be responsive because we have other candidates that want to speak to that issue, so. The next question in line, and we're gonna begin, I believe, with, uh, Ya'jin.
No, no.
Yes, yeah, you're gonna be first up next.
I'm trying to hide behind you.
The city of Fremont has considered three ponds for safe parking, but only adopted the first pond, which is to encourage nonprofits and local churches to provide overnight parking for people living in their vehicles. But the current program is limited, does not support RVs, families with children or inoperable vehicles. The second pond, if adopted, would allow for meeting the needs of unhoused residents where they are, for example, providing portable restrooms. And the third would be a city owned or city leased facility where there would be amenities provided by the city and it'd be a broader reach for, uh, those that are living in their vehicles. Do you support expanding, uh, the safe parking initiative in Fremont to include meeting people where they're at in their pond too? Or even a city leased or city owned, uh, safe parking lot, why or why not?
Um, I do support, uh, this, um, the reason is, um, I have seen the successful cases, uh, in Sacramento, uh, in Santa Barbara and in Mountain View. And so they didn't have a safe parking, uh, program and accommodate, uh, about a hundred fourteen families. And while we only have like fifteen or fourteen families, uh, you know, staying in, in the churches. So in order to get those people from RV to park on the street, we have to provide someplace, which I think that safe parking is the most efficient and effective way to go before we give them affordable housing. So I absolutely support, and I think choosing a location is key. And, uh, you want to make sure that, you know, you also, uh, take the consideration of the neighboring, uh, residents. And so that, you know, uh, it would not, it would benefit both of the homeless people needing a safe place and also the residents and business, thank you.
Going to District Six, Teresa Cox.
Safe parking is not good enough. For people living in the cars, we need to find them into permanent housing. There's a lot of things that have happened, uh, in District Six over time that, uh, with crime happening off of the freeway of eighty eighty, uh, going into the urban district. It's not as safe as I would like to see it personally, um, I would like to see more that we do housing, get people into more, uh, permanent housing that actually makes them feel that they're actually living in a establishment that respects them as opposed to a car, uh, that is not entirely safe to protect you from the weather or inclement weather or other, uh, subject to other open exposure. And that's why I have not supported the safe parking, um, due to, uh, issues that are surrounding, uh, crime and also safety, because we gotta make sure everyone is safe.
Thank you, Raymond Lu, District Six.
Hi, so, uh, to answer your question, uh, I, I do feel the current approach of the, the current problem, as you would say, uh, where, uh, it's not enough. Uh, I've talked to people from churches, they're being overwhelmed right now. It is not enough to support, uh, charities and non-government organizations to be able to, uh, support an issue of this magnitude. So yes, we do need safe parking, however, we must also ensure to work closely with all residents of Fremont to figure out where to put that and what the best way for it is. Now, uh, safe parking is really important, it doesn't, uh, destroy a people's dignity or anything like that. And, and, and it simply, it doesn't destroy people's dignity or anything like that, it simply provides a backstop to prevent them from sliding down further. It is a very important step in ensuring that they are able to get back on their feet, to be able to find housing and to contribute to society again, thank you.
Teresa King, District One now. Yeah, the question is, we've had, safe parking's had a three-pond initiative, came back, initiative is back in twenty seventeen, but the city councils only authorized pond number one, which is to have, uh, selected vehicles in churches and other nonprofit organizations. There is a pond two, which would expand it to meeting people where they need, whether it's families with children and, and other, uh, issues on the streets. And pond three would actually be to create a city owned or city leased site where you'd have amenities on site that's city funded and city owned. So do you support extending the program beyond pond one to ponds two and/or three?
Uh, yes, I do, I, I think that, uh, just doing the pond one, uh, with safe parking is not enough because the churches have their limited resources and, uh, there's not enough space for, um, cars and parties. And, uh, we need to, you know, we have children, um, you know, living with their, uh, parents in their cars or RVs and, um, we definitely need to look into, um, other cities having successful, uh, experiences. Recently, I think, you know, I heard that San Jose has some, um, mini homes and, um, yeah, being able to support these families and, uh, I think would be, um, what, um, operates in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Kumar, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. David, um, even I'm surprised to have this question on your list. The reason I'm surprised that this is kind of no brainer solution to solve the, the, at least some problem of homelessness which we are experiencing in city. If you allow those person, they are having some place to shelter, someplace to sleep. If we allow them to provide them safe place where they can park their vehicle in night and then sleep, the only thing which city has to take care, and I'm not sure if Yaski has not taken care, that place, provide them a place where it is safe for the other neighbors and safe for them. And that solves your one problem, at least you are having one problem now and then work on centers, providing centers, take them out from their RVs and then put them in center. But that is the priority of to, who do not have any, even any, any place to sleep. And this is very low hanging fruit, the city should take care and, like, it is surprised to me that why it is not being taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Sandhu, please.
Yes, I agree that we do need to take better measures, uh, pond one is, pond one is only just a bare minimum, we have two other choices. If I could say so, I would say pond three, but at least something better, so pond two, uh, we need, we need safe parking. If, you know, they're just sitting in their own cars, as long as it's in a good location, a decent location where it's not harming anyone, I'm all for it. But yes, we also need more resources, we also need more social workers, we also need more policing, more policing and more staff all around these areas. So no, it's not a permanent solution, but it's better than nothing instead of having homeless encampments. We should try to work at a more permanent solution and actually try to help these people versus just worry about where they're parking and where they're going, you need to have a real solution, thank you.
Could you hand the mic over to Mr. Angle, please?
I think you're still, you would like to answer, you don't want me to just pass and start going on and on about my explanation why I passed, is that what you said?
Well, I'm gonna give you, because we do have you here tonight, you graced us by your presence, you can, you know, any candidate, you, we really do want you to respond to the questions, but go ahead with a minute and use your time as you see fit.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think you, I think you asked the question.
Do you want me to repeat the question? Okay, I'll try, I wasn't sure whether you wanted to answer the question, so I'll ask the question again. We have a safe parking, uh, initiative in Fremont, which is at pond one, which provides, uh, limited, uh, space for people in, uh, to occupy nonprofits or local churches. But it doesn't a, address those in RVs or families with children or inoperable vehicles. Pond two would provide an expansion of what we have in Fremont to those where they live, like on Christie and Stewart, where you provide needed, uh, services to them and portable bathrooms. Pond three would be a city owned or city leased site where you would be able to provide city parking and amenities on a city funded site. So the current program is pond one, do you support expanding it to pond two and pond three?
No, I don't support it, spirit of pond two and pond three. Does pass the mic, I just answered the question.
You did, you answered the question, thank you, Mr. Wog.
This is really the sad part of the story. California spent twenty-four billion in last forty-five years to, to take care of the homelessness problem. Few months back, there was an audit report came about twenty-four billion, where did it go? They could not press out where this money went. And after spending twenty-four billion on homelessness, we are talking about safe parking, this is really a sad part of the story. But if this is the, this is the way to provide a temporary solution, then definitely we have no choice to say yes to this one. But as the tempel stays in this, uh, weather in the safe parking, we have to maintain the hygiene. City is already spending, uh, already having this program of toilets, providing the showers, city is already spending on it. The question arises, how long we should continue? How long we should continue, this is the part of, uh, part of the story, yeah, so we, we need to find a solution.
Thank you very much, now, the first question is to Teresa Cox, Teresa Cox, are you ready for the first question?
Yes, I am.
Oh, excellent, and so the question is, in the last decade, in order to meet housing goals, Sacramento has taken more action to preempt or override local control in terms of approving projects over the counter, which means no planning commission hearings or city council meetings, if it meets certain minimum criteria or creating certain objective standards that don't allow for discretionary disapproval by the planning commissioner or city council. What do you believe is the proper balance between state mandates and local control, Teresa Cox, District Six?
I think at this point we've got to find a balance, because some of these projects that happen in our own neighborhoods has the character, has the history, and we need people, uh, our residents, to be a part of, uh, participating and reviewing these type of projects. To give it to the state and do a stamp seal if it meets this criteria, it doesn't, uh, help us in terms of understanding the whole uniqueness of the housing and development project. And I think there's gotta be some exceptions and some rules put into place to support it as a city, to have our own jurisdiction and be able to have our own due process of having a planning vetted and then it goes to city council, and we need to figure out ways on how to build those exceptions and get waivers or change part of the rules here in Fremont that we can, uh, be able to use as our Fremont usable codes for all of our building codes and everything. Um, there are changes going on, but we need to come to some sort of compromise to make a little bit for everybody.
Mr. Lu.
Right, so.
District Six.
Yeah, so the question is, I guess, uh, addressing the, what should take precedence, uh, state control over this or local control? Uh, my answer is, uh, I think the, uh, the locals' control should be paramount compared to the state. Now, uh, let's be honest, uh, local control means it is us, the citizens, for the long game, decide, we are the ones who live here in our city every day. And I think all of us would have a better idea of what goes on in our city compared to the elected people who serve in Sacramento. And now, again, to address this, and also, this is a one size fits also. And now, again, to address this, and also, this is a one-size-fits-all solution. California is huge. You know, every city needs a different response. And I think the local community can address that better compared to people in Sacramento. Because if you think about it, right, every city is the same. Fresno is different from Los Angeles, is different from Sacramento, is different from San Jose, is different from Fremont. We need to have local control, take precedence, because it is our community and I think we know what is best, not some elected bureaucrats in Sacramento. Thank you.
Teresa King? Teresa King, District One.
I actually do support having a good balance between the two. I think because of some cities that haven't been doing their shares of, you know, building new housing, whether it's market rate or for housing, they, and then they're wondering why their schools had to close because, you know, you're not bringing in new families that have young kids, right? But Fremont actually has been doing our share of building both market rate and the lower income housing. And, but, you know, we shouldn't, I, I don't, I don't agree that, you know, we should just start rubber stamping the projects that are coming through just because they need all the requirements. We need to make sure that they, the projects do fit in our city's different neighborhood needs and that are fitting into our city.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar, District One.
Thank you, David. I would like to say, like, how we reached there, why we came to the point that state has to, that give us the main name, that, okay, you need to build these like housing units. The reason for this, that Fremont has not turned enough, has not turned enough at fast. We are missing houses, we are having affordable housing crisis, we are having housing crisis. As one of our candidates said, like, minimum median price to buy any house in Fremont, that is one point five million. One point five million means you need a three hundred thousand to down pay it, and you need a six thousand for the EMI for that making it, to own that house. So it is not easy, like. And then, if, if city is doing enough and enough fast, that building the houses and building the houses which are affordable and which is low cost, people can own them, we are not going to reach there. That somebody else is mentoring us, that what we need to do. If we are not doing our own part, somebody else is going to come and tell us. So it is better, but we should wake up now and do our part. Thank you.
Mr. Sandhu, District One.
So my answer is no, we need strong local control. I'm in favor of low-market housing, or we give up control to the state. That's not what we want. We want to be more hands-on approach with involving with our local city hall. It's required in this case. Every state, every city is different. And we need to control where it goes and how it's done. What kind of housing is it? Is it low-income? Is it mixed or mixed-use? We should be able to figure that out on our own. We don't need Sacramento to do that. Every city is different. Every district is actually very different. So we need to think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Engel, from District Five.
Yeah, please keep your question, I just somehow forgot what it is.
Sure, sure. Recently or the past decade, Sacramento's taken more statewide control over local planning decisions and allowing for projects to be approved over the counter, which means it's ministerial, which means there's no planning commission review, there's no city council review, they meet certain objective criteria. They've also set objective standards for design so that councils and commissions, as they have in the past, would create these arbitrary standards to deny projects. So what is the balance between state mandates and state control versus local control? Where do you come down on that?
Balance?
Use your mic, sir. Put your mic. Thank you.
I think the balance between, did you say state control, what's something rather control? Local control?
Yes.
I think the balance between state and local control that pertains to the question that's asked me is pretty good, but not quite good enough. Trying to think of how I should improve, so I can't think of the top line, how should improve, just an instinct of mine.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walk, District Five.
So state should have mandate what locally we do. As long as we support local efforts, when we have less governance, it's better, it's better for us to take appropriate actions locally. Because we understand our issues, our challenges, better than what state declared. With local control, it is also easier for us to collaborate with the cities in order to bring a solution to the challenging problem what we're discussing today, that is homelessness. Because when we deal with homelessness, it is obvious people go from one city to other city. So I think the local control helps us to take appropriate actions and collaborations with the other cities to deal these problems effectively.
Ja Jing Zhang, District Five.
I believe in a combination of the state and the local control. Because if the state doesn't have any numbers, and I, I can recall a case that the Huntington Beach is not building any affordable housing and the state is suing them. So I think that the responsibility has to be shared by each city. But again, that the city knows the city best. And so I think they can, the state can provide some guideline, but then the, the city has to provide the details so that we can use the resource effectively and efficiently so that we cannot cause further waste in resource and in human resource and in funding. And also we can get what we can, we can achieve in a timely manner. But sometimes when the state getting away and it's, the effect is to the opposite. I have seen many mandate, like such as when a school district, you know, special ed.
Thank you.
It's not good.
Thank you very much. We're not gonna, we have more questions in the audience than we have time. We have about fifteen minutes more left for the forum. So again, I would encourage, some of these are rapid-fire responses. I can get a few more questions in. The first question is, and we're gonna start with you, Mr. Lu, in District Six. Do we know if the homeless population are Fremont residents or outside the area? What's the breakout? Do you happen to know what that is?
So, the number of homelessness people in Fremont that are not originally from Fremont.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think the city has any statistics that are actually practice in detail. However, what I do know is based on my own experience, when I go out and I reach out to these people and ask about them, there is a good portion of them that are not from our city. Now, is this, I think the question should expand more.
You have, you have a minute.
All right, yeah, so.
But I was encouraging ten-second responses, so.
I'll, I'll, that was my question then. I wanna have, make sure everybody's questions are answered, so I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thank you. Teresa King, District One. Do you know the breakout between homeless, those experiencing homelessness who are from Fremont and those who have no connection to Fremont?
I don't think we have any.
Go ahead. Mr. Kumar.
Yeah, definitely, the homeless people which are in Fremont, they are all not a percent from Fremont resident. There is no data available on city website. I tried checking that. And because of that, there is no specific thing which we can handle that what if a person is not a Fremont resident, what if not a Nevada University Fremont resident, vice president, somebody comes from outside. We do not have any clear mandate or clear procedure to say that, to be on, to be on that problem.
Mr. Sandhu, District One.
Well, it seems like a common theme everyone basically know. But we do have a point-in-time count that periodically do figure out, okay, how many homeless people are here? Again, we're not, we're not knowing where they are, where they're coming from. They could be inside buildings. I just have homeless people in my building, it's office building. I don't know how people got in, but they did. But we can't track people. And what I did notice is there are more homeless near heart areas. And I think they're coming from different cities within the Bay Area. I can't pinpoint whether they're Fremont residents or not, but it seems like people pass coming through all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Engel.
I want to be careful. This is a tough issued deal. First, I have to figure out, are they local or Fremont? Or are they outsiders? Second, I have to figure out, why are they homeless? Is it because they're poor or low-income? Or is it because they have drug, alcohol addiction, drug, alcohol problem or some other thing going on, that something else going on, that's some other issue?
Thank you. Mr. Walk, District Five.
If existing city council members do not have the data, if the Fremont city do not have the data, then I cannot say that I have the data. It is straightforward, it is. So now, when we sit in the council, we have to make the decision based on the data. We call it as a database, data-driven decisions. So it is important that we must have this data. How much population is, are the residents of Fremont? Because where do we use a Fremont resources in order to find the solutions to the problem? There are people who are having the mental health, health issues. Who are they? Who are these people and what kind of help they need from there? So we need this data and we must do survey in order to build future affordable housing or come up, or come up with the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ja Jing Zhang, District Five.
Thank you. Yes, this current city council said no data, and I don't believe we have data. But I have talked with the match director, and he said, you know, he's working in the trenches every day. He thought that probably about seventy to seventy percent are from our local Fremont. And I also talked to some people, actually the homeless in front of the Walmart. And he actually been living in Fremont for seven years. He came from Florida and now, he used to go to San Francisco. Now he, he stationed in Fremont. The reason is Fremont is safer. But I think that homeless, even though at this point, the accurate data is not important because the, the need is far exceed the accurate name, the number. I think that we need to, if we have ever have available units or something, we would give it to students, families, seniors who work in Fremont. So let's get that down first, because the data at this point is meaningless. You know, try to track them down, I do not know there.
Thank you. Teresa Cox, District Six.
No data to support it, one way or the other. Thank you.
This is a yes or no question. And if it's yes or no, if just answered yes or no, we'll get another question. Some cities have found success providing renters facing eviction with a free eviction defense attorney. And would you support hiring attorneys for free to represent tenants facing eviction in Fremont?
I would support, I would support the tenants having their defense attorney, but I'm not sure the city has the funding that kind of, to check. I do think, you know, because people are being evicted for different reasons, whether they are sick for a longer time, they're, you know, they need to use their savings to pay their, you know, medications or, you know, different reasons because, you know, universal health care. And so, you know, any little hiccup, you know, people are out of employment for a month or two could, you know, run out, make them run out of their savings. So I think that people should be given resources when they are facing eviction, because as I said earlier, treatment is much more ineffective than prevention. And I, in the past, I have advocated for universal health, which would really keep people housed. And I still support that because that's one way of doing it.
So that was a yes. Prevech Kumar, District One.
Can I repeat your question?
Sure. Do you support having an attorney, subsidies authorize or fund attorneys to represent tenants facing eviction? So pay for the attorney so it's free to the tenant? Do you support that, yes or no?
I do not support that, that, somebody has to pay that money. And city has a lot very important questions, a lot very important issues to take care. And for this, if there's a problem between tenant and renters, renters and landlord, that they should settle down in between. City is not come in between of them. And city already have their business, have control of that five percent rate increase. And after that, if there's any conflict between renters and landlord, they should settle down in between. There is, there is not city which should become and spend that resources. City is already running out of resources. Thank you.
Mr. Sandhu.
I agree, there should be really no city involvement. If anything, it should be the county, the county of Alameda to step in. Just like a public defender, it's gonna be Alameda County, public defenders are gonna help people. And yes, these people don't have resources, they need money. So I'm all for them having an attorney, but not at the city level. Thank you.
Mr. Engel, District Five.
What was the question, please?
Do you support having the city fund a, an attorney to represent a tenant facing eviction so that the tenant doesn't have to pay for the attorney?
I'm not sure because, I don't know, because this is a tough moral ethics question.
Thank you. Mr. Walk, District Five.
I am no for this one. I feel it is not city's business to get into this kind of, uh, problem-solving issues. Because we have limited resources. When we talk about public safety, we say we are short on police department. You know, we talk about permit process, we say we are short on resources. When we are short on resources, with these limited resources, we cannot take more. So this is a matter between landlord, tenant, and the protection what the constitution provides.
Ms. Zhang.
Absolutely, I would not support city provide the attorney a resource. The reason is California is already a pro-tenant state. So from giving the three-day notice to quit till they get evicted, if, if they are legit, it's already could take three to six months. And if you give them, the city has to pay for it. Guess what? The side effects is any tenant would choose not to pay and then they will get free attorney and think about what that's going to do to the rental business, to the landlord. And I think the, and I think that the, the tenant should pay for it or they can appear in court because it's very easy. The landlord would, would start a procedure and they can state their case. It's very, give them enough time to state their case. Thank you.
Going to District Six, Teresa Cox.
I would not support it because right now, we have a current process with the city that you have a review board where the landlord and the tenant meet up and they go through their discussion and see if they can reach a settlement. And at this point, anything beyond that, I feel would not be in the best interest of utilizing our money for a tenant, a private relationship between the tenant and the landlord. Thank you.
This is gonna be our last. Mr. Lu, didn't you start?
Yeah, no, I haven't spoken yet. But I'll keep this brief as a rapid-fire response. No, we already have a bunch of shortfall this year, and I simply don't want to see where the money's going from. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the question's now gonna be to Teresa King. This is gonna be our last question before we wrap this up. What is that?
Last round. Teresa started the last round.
Okay, so next one, I, sorry. Prevech, you're gonna start, and this will be the last question, so. Can you elaborate on what services you can bring to the homeless people to help them to stay off the streets? And how can you convince city council and Fremont staff to actually implement these services? So, Mr. Kumar, District One.
This topic very near to my heart. And to solve the homeless problem, I have been involved in several services where we start from the providing food to those homeless people and provide centers to those homeless people. And through the mentorship program, to homeless people what they need, how they come back to the mainstream. So I would like to convince Fremont city council to allow that, to engage more nonprofit organizations which are happy to help, come back, and help and mentor all these homeless people who are ready to come to workforce. At least one class of homeless people, you will be running solid. You can solve one, not all the problem can be solved, but you can solve some of the homeless people which can, easily can come on the workforce with little training and little, I would say, train.
Thank you. Mr. Sandhu, District One.
So as I mentioned, we discussed Prong One. So as I mentioned, we discussed problem one, two, and three. I think we need to do more. We need to provide more services to the homeless. I think we should be very aggressive, but this is a very pressing issue. It's not taking seriously enough. So I will try to go to problem three. And we should have more social workers, just more workers in general, more volunteers, more organizations that will help this whole process. They need food, safety, and shelter, just like any normal person. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to district five. Mr. Engel. Can you elaborate on what services you can bring to the homeless people, the people experiencing homelessness, to help them stay off the streets? And how can you convince city council and Fremont staff to actually put those ideas into practice? And please put your mic next to your phone, your mouth.
Last, last, different topic covers, they, but it's a moral ethics collective type path. Things to walk right through in the area center.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Waugh, Chandra Waugh, district five.
So as scholars, healthcare workers, and homeless advocates, they analyze the data and they found there are major contributors to homelessness, that is poverty, housing, and the substance issues as well as the psychiatric issues of the people. So we have to take care of mental health problems. We must provide services so that we take care of those people. We have to move unasked people temporarily to shelter until we have the permanent solutions to this one. People who are under poverty, we have to help them. We have to collaborate with the multiple, different government agencies, as well as we have to collaborate with various nonprofit organizations who are providing humanitarian services to take care of the homeless people and their needs. So we have to provide all these services to kind of help them so that this humanitarian issue we can handle nicely and in better way.
Ms. Zhang.
Thank you. I'd like to have a comprehensive approach. And from a human resource point of view, and from a funding point of view, and from a collaboration. So we need hire more people to help them, and also we need to somehow to get more funding by looking at grants, by working with regional and state, and also collaboration with the developer. And from the city point of view, we can provide a streamlined process so that we can build affordable housing with more clear deadline, I mean, the timeline, so that, so the developer knows that, you know, they can finish the project in time and so that they can afford to build more affordable housing, because time is money. So that transparency and accountability is a big help for the builder to willing to build more affordable housing. And also, I think, work with more MATT and fire department, police department, and again, that our Fremont citizen to all help out. Thank you.
Ms. Cox, district six.
I think the first thing is to prevent homelessness. And we gotta leverage the prevention by keeping people housed with our Keep Fremont House program. I think another part is targeting and looking at people that are more at risk and seeing how we can help them at a faster pace. Strengthening tenant landlord relations to prevent the displacement and evictions. But I also look at how we need to support local and state to increase more affordable housing in our city and be able to streamline the approvals and set aside for those that are formerly homeless. And also, we do have an extended winter relief program that should be extended for over a year to keep people housed and increase the intake hours so that those that are more vulnerable would be able to be saved and increase the connections between all the outreach programs, whether it's at the state, local, county, and federal side.
Thank you. Mr. Lu, district six.
So like I mentioned before, question for homelessness is a very balanced approach. We need to provide compassion, what we currently have, along with accountability and practicality, what we currently don't have. Now, listen, I am 100% in support of providing better mental health services to those of you addicted to men, for those who need the help, and affordable housing for all residents of Fremont to ensure that they can stay housed. However, we also need to take a firm stance against any current criminal behavior. Any open drug usages by anybody should never be tolerated. And nor should any crime that has occurred, whether it be petty theft or assault, those should never happen. We must enforce laws as well as provide help to those who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on this question, and Ms. Kang from district one.
Thank you. As we have worked very hard in the last few years to establish our housing evaluation center, our safe parking program, and building more affordable housing, now it is time to work on problem two and three. And especially with the grant passing, they're gonna be enforced at the local level. I think it's actually a good opportunity to make sure that these people are, we're using the money that we've been using on weekly basis, we're spending, you know, for example, on the same site that may have, you know, 10 people camping there, was spending $5, you know, actually, like $5,000 a week, for example, or $10,000 a week. We could easily use that money to help them, move them into a better housing situation with better conditions.
Thank you very much, and I wanna thank all the candidates for being here tonight. Let's give them a loud round of applause. Wonderful. We have all eight candidates for the three districts. And at this time, I'd like to thank our partner, the Fremont Library, and she stepped out. I don't see her right now. Becky, that's my daughter. Becky helped set up the mics and set up the venue for us and helped publicize it in the library. So some of you heard about it through the posters here, and she set up these wonderful posters behind each of the candidates. I also wanna thank our team at the Fremont for everyone for putting these wonderful questions together and putting on the event. First, I wanna thank Marie Hughes who did our live streaming here this evening. I wanna thank our timer, Benita Girma, who did a wonderful job, a great, wonderful job, and everybody behind here. And then our people that helped organize the questions, Annie Caruga and Gada and Sush Flower and Sandy Moore and Kate Ammon. Give them a round of applause. Listen again, who did it remotely. And Kate, thank you for organizing the questions for us. So at this point, also, we have, who else did you point again? And Mary Lynn Harris too. Thank you for your help. Thank you. So on behalf of Fremont for everyone, I wanna make sure that you, you as the candidates and people here in the audience and people that are watching live stream, make sure that you share this with our neighbors. There's very few ways that we have channels of communication with our citizens in Fremont. We have an election coming up on November 5th. When do absentee ballots go out? October 21st? When is it? Very soon.
Beginning of October.
I thought it was tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow. It'll go up sooner. So they're gonna go out, and so people can start voting, and they can look at tonight's recorded forum and make their decisions. There will be also another candidate forum on October 11th at the Lowden College for the city council candidates. There's also a nonprofit city council forum coming up as well. So watch these other opportunities for the council candidates to participate. Have a nice evening and thank you very much.